I will call our Board of Ed meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. We'll start, as always, with public audience. If there's anybody who would like to speak before we get started. Hello, Julie. Name, address, three minutes, please.
Go to the podium.
Right on. Because we're Board of Ed, not Board of Selectmen. We only do three minutes.
Joan Cole, 26 Whitcomb Drive. Latimer Lane School renovation was placed on the ballot and approved for $36.8 million. The funds were insufficient to cover the escalating costs and revisions were made to reduce the project. The project is presented to the public, has been reduced in scope while the costs have escalated. This project was presented prior to the consulting report for redistricting by placing the sixth grade at the junior high. We are now being asked to appropriate $1.7 million for additional costs that will probably escalate in cost overruns. We are living in an inflationary environment with escalating costs for everything associated with building materials and labor. There is anticipation of an increase in the spending budget for the next year with the burden transferred to the taxpayer, who is also living with increased costs on a daily basis. The project should be placed on hold since there are no guarantees that there will be more overruns, since no project going forward will have a fixed price basis. The project should be placed on hold since there are no guarantees that there will be more overruns, since no project will have a fixed-price contract, sorry. A pause in the project for a year will give the Board of Education time to reconfigure the usable space, receive a cost analysis on the reduction of students through redistricting at the Latimer Lane School with the sixth grade in the junior high, and continue to give students a quality education. I am asking the boards to place the Latimer Lane renovation project on hold for at least a year and not spend more money on a failed project that reduces the scope of the project and the effectiveness of the renovation. And all my comments will be posted on Simsburg Patch, Twitter at Joan Cole, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Joan. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good afternoon. Mark Scully, 29 Notch Road, West Simsburg. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd hope to do it later when I could sort of write some more things down and formulate some views, but it looks like this is our chance. So I want to first thank the Board of Ed and Public Works for all of the support that they provided us as we are looking into, particularly Jason Casey and Tom Roy. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sustainability Committee, of which I'm chair, and I have a simple request, and that is that you approve Add Alternate One, the geothermal contingent, on a thorough review of the lifecycle costs of that product. The Sustainability Committee has tried to attend Public Building Committee meetings and stay abreast of the developments, but just on Monday, we received a report on the lifecycle cost of geothermal. We dug into the numbers, we met with the engineering firm. To be honest, we have unanswered questions. We may be wrong, and if we get answers to these questions, we may find their estimate of 300-year payback is right. That doesn't feel right to us, and so we feel, as your Sustainability Committee, we need to look into that. So we'd like to get to the bottom of that. So I'm afraid if you shoot down the geothermal tonight, it'll never make it back on. If you give it a chance, and we look at the numbers and they really don't make sense, then we will say that, and then I think you can trust that the Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen will take it out. The reasons for geothermal, putting the economics aside, which we'd love to help really get to the bottom of, the case for geothermal is so strong, and I think it's important to understand that by going to Add Alternate One, we're not only adding geothermal, we are taking the existing gas boiler that is in great shape, it's fairly new, relegating that to backup service. That transforms that school into an all-electric, potentially net-zero school. All right? That's more than just getting geothermal. We are transforming that school. And there are many reasons why we should consider doing that, right? The health and welfare of our children, they learn better in an environment where they're not burning natural gas, which, let's be honest, is methane, a powerful greenhouse And I encourage us to look at this geothermal, not as some have put it, pouring money into the ground, but as an investment. We would be creating an asset, a thermal asset, that pays richly for many years, 100 years, all right? So at some point, I think if we understand the numbers and it's a 300-year payback, we will recommend against it. But if it looks like, as we have seen in most cases for geothermal, it's not a three- or five-year payback, it is a longer payback, but it is a solid, high-performing payback. So we request that we look at this as an investment, not only a financial investment, but a statement that we are building an all-electric, potentially net-zero school. And I encourage you to consider the geothermal as a geothermal/solar bid, which would allow us to actually lower the costs and make the economics more favorable. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Here's any questions or not of public audience, no. So now we're going to move into information reports, and I just want to open by saying, as a Board of Ed, we're all really excited that we're here talking about Latimer Lane. This project has already started to take shape in the school through the renovation of the gym into classrooms, the library into classrooms. We are ready to go, constructions moving onsite at the end of November. So we're very excited and looking forward to kind of buttoning down this last piece, if you will. So we appreciate you all attending and being part of this conversation tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Curtis.
Sure. So we have Jeff Wazinski here from TechTown. Yep, come on up. Jeff is going to walk us through the presentation with the goal of really helping people understand where we are with the project development, as well as a description of eight add alternates, understanding that one of the add alternates, the geothermal that was just spoken to, wasn't in the initial design. The others were, and they were pulled out of the price to try to, you know, keep the price as minimal as we could over the referendum. So our goal as a board tonight, after we get input and discussion and respond to questions, is to eventually make decisions as to what number we will move forward to the Board of Selectmen for consideration. So it'll kind of be two parts of the meeting tonight. One will be the presentation, the Q and A, and the other will be more of our board working through that process to try to get a motion on the table to move forward.
I did want to just ask if we could, rather than interrupting Jeff, kind of let him get through his presentation. You all have a copy in front of you, mark your pages, we can go back and forth after that, but if we could just let Jeff be heard out before we all jump in, that's my request. Thank you.
All set?
All yours.
Okay, great. Can you hear me okay with the... Okay, very good. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Wazinski. I'm a principal at TechTown Architects. I've been with this project since the start of the master plan, so for several years now. We have a brief presentation, about 10, 15 minutes, and it's going to highlight the budget, give you a broad overview of the project. We'll talk about the floor plan, just to show you kind of the comparison of the existing to the new. Talk about the budget, and then get into the details of the add alternates. This slide was up for quite some time, so that's rendering of what the exterior would look like with the gym on the right and the cafeteria on the left-hand side. These are views of the proposed media center. The colors are just a little off because of the projector and the lights, but a really interactive space, really 21st century kind of environment, very flexible, adaptable space created. So it's really a transformation of the interior of what used to be actually the gymnasium and cafeteria, so that's where that's located. And then the addition, modification to the cafeteria, again, some of the colors are quite washed out on the screen, but believe me that there's this great connection to the exterior, the nature, and lots of natural daylight infused deep inside into the educational spaces within the building. So we're pretty excited about the overall design. The floor plan itself, the yellow outline is the outline of the existing building, and so you can see kind of where we're adding to and modifying the building, and I'll just take that off. And you can see the end product is really, we're centralizing the shared spaces in the center of the building, the cafeterias, the media centers, the band and music and art, so that the students can kind of come to the center of the building and experience that, those shared services. And then meanwhile, they live in these well-crafted learning communities for each grade level. So that's kind of just a very broad snapshot of where the project is overall. I am here somewhat hat in hand here. Our original referendum was 36-792-406, as everybody remembers. Our budget overage right now, in a very simple slide here to understand, is $1.7 million, 1,766,974. What's important is that that includes, if that's the bid results, the allowances and the soft cost adjustments are okay. So that's what I refer to as total project cost. So we're comparing total project costs of the 36.7 to the additional need, which is 1.7. The yellow is the revised budget, and that's without alternates. And I'm going to walk you through the series of alternates that we've identified. And I just want to take a moment here, and I heard public comment, and the team, the staff, the administration, we've all worked very, very hard at making sure we got the best value out of this project. So there was a little bit of a discussion about scope or a comment about scope, and I'll make sure it's crystal clear to this group that the original intent of the scope is still in this project. And then where it's not, we've identified it very clearly in the alternates. So we didn't cut a gym, we didn't cut a cafeteria, the scope is the scope. So add alternates, there's eight of them, the first of which, we heard public comment, was the hybrid geothermal HVAC system, which is a large, rather large cost, the 1.6, and it's a piece that deserves some conversation. We have a couple slides on that to clarify what that system is all about, what's included in it. The second piece, site work. These are seat walls, and I have a site plan that kind of show you where those are located and what those look like. Three is another site work item. As you can see, there's several site work-related items. We tried to preserve as much as we could inside the building as far as the educational space and try to pick our spots, if you will. So stamped concrete alternatives. Four is poured-in-play surface. And some of these are strategic, so that you could implement these relatively easily after the fact, if, you know, in the future, without having to undo any of the new work that you're planning. Number five is a south courtyard. Six is a storage shed. Number seven, there won't be a lot of conversation on it, but this is an alternate that we typically integrate into all of our projects, because we like to understand the value between different finishes. So we're not necessarily recommending changing the base bid flooring, because we think it's a great, it's a very durable, maintenance-free product that we would recommend. And then eight is a vehicle barrier gate. So those were the eight alternates that we added into the project to try to protect some of the numbers because of the current bid climate. And like I said, with exception to GEO, all of these items were in the original scope, and they were identified as alternates because of the budgetary problems to try to protect the base bid. So this slide here is just an overview, and I have slides that show each step, so I'm going to drill right into it. So the first one is the geothermal. On the top, you see the number one, that's where the bore field would be located underground. There still would be a play area. And I just want to be crystal clear about this item. This was never contemplated in the original referendum as a scope-of-work item. It's a great lesson learned for our firm. We make sure that we have those conversations early on in master planning now, because of the costs associated with systems like these, so we're not discouraging the fact that it's a great system to get you to the net zero, carbon-free, carbon-neutral, but it was never contemplated in the original referendum. The design team had early conversations with the Clean Energy Task Force, and we took it upon ourselves to implement alternative designs into the bid documents so we could identify a price at our cost, just so we could identify that value. So because it was important early on, we discussed it and incorporated it into the bid documents. So that's how we got to where we were. There was some reference to calculations and statistical analysis. I should mention, Justin Hopkins is in the back, he works for TechTown Architects, he's the project manager, point of contact. Brian Hamel is in the back, he's from CES Engineering, so if there's detailed questions, we could certainly answer those and circle back to some of this data. But we certainly analyzed it in various different ways to see the payback. And the challenge, part of the challenge is, is last year you just installed a really highly efficient boiler system, so you're kind of comparing a like-new system to a GEO system. So it's kind of a little bit of an unfair advantage, but that's kind of what drives up some of the number of years, so just to be fully transparent with that piece. So some of the other items, site-related, site work, seat walls and fixed furniture, again, we think we've, all the twos are kind of where they're spread out on the site. There's some seat walls to kind of define some outdoor educational spaces, and then some rather, I guess, more or less permitted seating arrangements that you see in the photos there and benches. Some of this could be implemented easily afterwards, either through FFNE, through sole sourcing procurement through the town, and maybe you could save some dollars in that from some of the added costs from sending it through a GMP. Item three, and we've had a lot of conversation about this one, and it's important to look at it, that on the, there's three bubbles, so there's three areas where there's areas of stamped concrete. The base bid includes basically a crushed granite gravel now, so this one, this one, as we get into the conversations, we can drill in more detail and talk about the long-term longevity, the practicality, those kinds of things. Four is, there's four play areas, designated play areas, poured-in-play surfaces, and we've seen this because a lot of communities are implementing these rubberized cushioned play surfaces. Those numbers have really shot up quite a bit over the last year and a half, two years. So we identified, knowing that, we identified it as an alternate, and you'll see that in your list if you're looking at the cost list, it's a sizable cost. This could be implemented after the fact, you could leave your playscape and install the surface around the playscape at a future date. Number five is on the south courtyard. Again, just the one thing that COVID did teach us is to reconnect with nature and the importance of outdoor spaces to not only just in life, but in education, educational institutions. So we developed this courtyard, it's immediately adjacent to a band room, it would have set up very well. There's some seating arrangements, as you can see there in the plan, in the large plan. So this is a piece that we flagged as a possible alternate that could be done at a future date if needed. The storage shed is, for those that are familiar with the site, there's an existing brick storage shed, it's the top picture there. Basically, we're putting an addition there, because it's so close to the building, we have to kind of replace that use somewhere onsite. So we basically, in our documents for the alternate, we rebuilt exactly what you see a brick storage shed. So these days, a brick storage shed built out of, you know, masonry costs quite a bit. We can look at alternatives, maybe some modular pieces that would serve a similar purpose on a slightly different value. Site number, alternate number eight, so there's a series of vehicle barrier gates to, from a security perspective, somewhere in base scope, one isn't, and this is at the loading, serving area. And that's, you know, it's not aesthetically pleasing, but it does the job from a control and security perspective, but we've identified that as a cost as well. And then I mentioned earlier the flooring finishes, and just identifying as a standard practice for our office, we identify that so that owners can choose best value or if they have preference on finishes. So it's a difference between what's a linoleum, which, again, base contract, linoleum, I know maybe back in the early '70s, you think of the linoleum floor, it's come a long way, but what we like about it is it's actually, it's a natural product, it's easy to maintain, and it doesn't off-gas. So that's why it's a good product for the school. So we identified alternates there, I think, gave you enough there. So in summary, I believe the superintendent had kind of queued up, the conversation is twofold, it's the original overage and then the discussion of the alternates. So we'd be happy to answer any questions, and thank you for listening.
Yeah, so I open it up to you all. Yep, so Sean.
Can we just go back to the first picture? So just in terms of what you decided to put in alternate versus leaving the base. So what caught my eye was...
The plan?
No, the actual picture, the rendering.
Oh, yeah.
It's pretty. Pretty is expensive.
Sure.
The cafeteria there, right? The really pretty roof and lots of glass.
Sure.
And that's not necessarily necessary for education, right? And that looks expensive, I'm not an architect, but where is the consideration for that, the other roof? You know, that's, that makes the building look pretty, but that doesn't look functional to me.
Yeah, no, it's a good comment and question. This was an earlier on rendering. What has changed a little bit since this rendering is that the north wall, we've added much more solid walls on the edges and reduced the glass to a point where it was really purely functional. So there still is a fair amount of glass, but it's only in the seating area. So we did, it's a great question.
So that's probably taken anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Again, we all, you want to look at a nice building, right? But the point of this is education, right? Nice is secondary, right? Especially in an inflationary environment, so.
Absolutely agree.
So that's not, I'm looking there, the really pretty roof looks expensive to maintain, too. Is not necessarily...
It was simplified, the structure was greatly simplified, it became a flat roof, the curtain wall became just that one facade, and we filled in some of the wall on the side, so...
Oh, I appreciate that. Thanks for the clarification.
Sure. Yep.
Wendy, go ahead.
I have a lot of questions, but I'll just take them up. To start, we'll work our way around. Oh, yeah, I was going to say, we could pick a number, too. This plan, does it, I was on the original, the task force, are we still doing the plan to move sixth grade out of each school for that wash?
So that's not something we're addressing at this point in time because of the cost to move that up to Henry James. So we have, and the community, while we would love to put that forward, we're just not in a position to do that added work at Henry James right now.
So the plan right now is this is a K through six school?
We would stay K six, and if at some point in time we can consider that move, it gives us the ability to relocate preschool and decent, and really push it out into the community in different places.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, because the original plan, the scope of the school itself will have enough space for K through six for the expanding enrollment, right?
Right.
The other question, so 36 million at referendum, right? And then we're looking at a 1.7 overage from the base.
Right.
And then the new items other than the geothermal, 1.4, those were a part of the original 37. So in theory, it's 1.7 over plus the cost to add those things back in.
Except that we're now looking at that piecemeal, we're not looking to add all of them back in.
Right, but I'm just saying, it's really the overage on the base without those items, and then adding...
If you go back to the original scope.
You're adding like 3-point-something million to get where we were.
When we approved 36, right.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clear. Thank you.
Linda, go ahead.
So I know I saw a list a while back of all the work that you guys had done, which we appreciated to try to bring the scope down once you realized it was going to get to be a big number than what had been anticipated. And I don't remember everything that was on that list, so my first question is, is everything that you're adding back just a subset of what was on that list, or is it everything that was on the list of things that you cut out? Or are there other things? Because it seemed like you had a long list and had done a lot of work to reduce the scope. Are you only proposing to potentially add back some or all?
That's, it's a good question. I would not say that it was a reduction and addition of the scope back. It was, the challenge during the design phases was to take the scope and the function and find a better way to do it. So we worked with a better way, more efficient way, a more constructible way. So we worked with our CMR, with our OPM, with, to find, to develop and refine the design and change some of the details to achieve the same goal, but in a more efficient, value-oriented way. So that's how we tried to preserve as much of the original program and scope as possible. The alternates were identified because we still thought, even with that effort, the costs were going to exceed, you know, during our final CD estimate, they were still exceeding that, so we decided to identify a series of alternates to try to, like we say, protect the bid.
So if I could try to summarize that, if I heard it right.
Sure.
It seems like you did a good job once you found out that your price tag was bigger than your funding source in identifying ways to make it smaller. And this is some ways to make it that bigger, but not all of them. Some of the efficiencies you rendered out, you're still keeping.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I'll give you an example, I was just asking, Mike, you know, it's a full-size gym, it's going to be great for the community. Originally, it was a wood floor.
Yeah.
Took the wood out, proposed a rubber floor, which is an all-purpose floor, which is fine, it's about $200,000 less.
Yeah.
So that kind of reengineering was done throughout the project.
On one of the slides, oh, this one actually.
Sure.
It says instrumental music outdoor classroom. Can you just tell us a little bit more about...
This right here?
...music lessons outdoors in the winter?
Well, depends on the weather, right?
And it's warming, so you're right.
Yeah, it was 70 degrees last week. The intent is to, yes, to create an outdoor educational space for education. It's immediately adjacent to the musical spaces. Will they have concerts out there? Probably not. But will they have sessions out there, classrooms, on days that they can? Certainly. And I think we saw that firsthand, that the principal was utilizing every aspect of the outdoor area when maybe they could. And as designers, we were trying to make sure to support that. So it's not intended to be kind of a theater in the round or anything like that, it's really just a space for likely two classes to meet, and whether it's, you know, a visiting author or a musician or something like that.
So that's one of the add-backs. If it weren't added back, what would that space be?
So what it would be is, would be a, I believe, a gravel. It still would be defined, it just wouldn't have the same definition with the seating walls and the amphitheater. So you still have a space, but it would be, you'd have to, the goal would be, you'd have a gravel space, level, and you could fill it with fixable movable furniture in the future, or, you know, some benches instead of the original design. Does that make sense?
Can we let somebody else ask a question?
Can I just add, I just want to add your question. The south court, the outdoor courtyard is the one on here, the classroom is already included in the 37 million, correct? Because there's the two outdoor spaces.
So both out...
Both counted as this south?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, here, you know what, I'll go to this.
Sorry, this one's a little...
No, no, it's, make sure...
Can we send our heads over back? Music, we're nervous.
Sure.
Calling the recorder.
I don't know, I think the pilot should go. Just wanted to clarify what...
Sure, so, so let me zoom into this one here a little bit. Sure, so, so let me zoom into this one here a little bit. There we go. All right, so, let's see, where's my cursor? Can you see? I can't see.
Bottom right five.
So, so on the right side courtyard, there's two and three. So alternates two and three on the, which is off the cafeteria, so the far right. Those are alternates two and three, so there's some seat walls in that, in that courtyard, and some fixed furniture, and then there's also stamped concrete. So if you didn't accept two and three, or two and three, or two and three, you'll end up with basically a gravel surface, flat surface, that you can eventually in the future put outdoor furniture. So you'll still have the space, you'll still have the doors, you'll still have the access, it'll be graded, it's just not going to be finished out. It's kind of like, think of it as your basement, if you will, it's like, it's there, it's kind of, has the framing, but it's not fit out fully.
So that could be done later.
Sure, sure. And that's kind of what the strategy behind selecting some of these is to, you want to pick, pick areas where you don't have to undo what you just did in order to put it in. And then on the, on the courtyard, on the, adjacent to the band room, that's simply just one alternate, it's alternate number five, to take out that work and just leave it as a basic gravel flat area. Does that make sense?
Kind of.
But it just, as a piggyback on that question, I'm looking at the two and three, kind of smack in the middle of the, to the, I would say, the right side of the renovated school, right at the border of the new addition. So you have that courtyard kind of in the middle of the school, if that's left gravel, though, I'm assuming that means kids are tracking gravel. It's, I don't know if that's exactly what we want to be happening, though, right?
Yeah, there's a, there's a practical and operational and maintenance issue that comes along with the selection of those two, or are not selecting them, true.
Amber, go ahead.
On all of these add alternate items, ones through eight, is it correct to say that these are all items that we would be adding back in, they're not included in the base right now? But is there going to be a cost associated where it can be less expensive in the long run to do the work or add that in now? Are you, are you gonna have to undo any work that you're doing if you, if you wanted to go back and put one of these in? Or once, if we say no to any of these one through eights, how easy is it to go back down the road and say, oh, well, now we want to do that, now we want to do that?
Sure.
How does that work?
Yeah, it, great question from a contractual obligation perspective. These have been bid as alternates, and it's likely that the subcontractors that put the numbers to these alternates are not going to hold their numbers till, like, the end of the project. They're gonna want to know, basically now, if you decide, which ones you decide upon. So that's one answer. The other question, I think, is if you do it later, our experience has been that if you delay it and deter it, it's, the cost is going to increase because you're, there's other logistics involved, like remobilization of a different contractor. If you don't do it at the same time, typically the numbers go up, even if you do it after the fact, because you, it's a separate project, there's separate, you know, costs associated with getting somebody out there, so.
Are you having to undo, though, any of the work, or is this truly things that could pretty easily be lifted out and, and you're not having to, to rip something up in two or three years to go ahead and do the finish, you know, the additions?
So I think to the point maybe that the courtyards, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Like to try to access the courtyards to do any of this work at a later date?
Yeah, like if you do something now to be more economical, but then later on down the road, if you decide to add it back in, are you having to, like, rip out what you, what you did?
What we just put in, right?
Right.
And you may not rip it out, but in the case of the courtyards, you wouldn't have direct access, so you're bringing right trees and concrete, you're walking through the hallways to rip it.
Right, but the courtyards aren't part of any of these alternates, right?
They are. You see the numbers two and three on the map on your PowerPoint?
Yeah, so, so to answer your question, your original question, three and five, if you're looking at your list, are, would be a bit more challenging because they're in areas where they're inaccessible. They're, they will be accessible during construction, but won't be after the fact. So best value, if you're looking at that, and I know you have to look at a series of things, I would look at three and five carefully, because those would be a little bit more difficult.
Lisa?
So I don't know if you guys are gonna do a financing explanation, should I hold out or just ask my finance questions? I have both capital and financing questions.
So, as to how we pay, so I think tonight, we're just trying to determine the differential between where we are and where we're going. And my understanding is that that whole financing question kind of comes after we know what we're dealing with, so to speak. No?
So a little bit, it's a little bit of the, what do I need and what can I afford? And it's not like a normal home thing, right? Some, because it's a public purpose. At some point, we need time to evaluate that. But my questions are specific for Amy, and I can ask them on Tuesday.
Okay.
Generally, we're sort of seeing borrowing costs going up, and that's leading to increased debt service. We have a current debt service limit at eight percent. So if the cost more, more later on, like the car payment is going up, for the same car, how are you planning for that and how are you planning to accommodate that? It seems to me you've got three choices. You could say, whoa, I was gonna buy the BMW, but it now seven percent to borrow, I'm gonna go with a Honda. Once you find that out, because I can't afford the car payment in year three, four, and five, because that's when I'm starting school, I'm not gonna be in a job. And how, how are you planning for the debt service impact in your planning?
So, let me see if I can understand what you're asking, because now you've confused me a little bit. We've planned, so we've, we've already planned what the, the initial biggest piece of this cost is, right? And we have a bond plan for that big thirty-six million, right? So now we're talking about the addition of 1.7, maybe, maybe more, depending on how our conversations go tonight and what decisions we make. So we're talking about just that differential, and you're saying that differential of 1.7 million, how are we going to plan for that impact on the bond service? Is that what you're asking?
The question is, if bonding costs, you go to bond, we think, okay, here's what we think it's gonna cost, we go to bond, holy moly, it's costing quite a bit more than that. We know our debt service is now gonna be at nine or 10 percent. Do you go forward? I mean, how, how put that project? Or do we come back? Or do you have a contingency? And how do you, how do we plan for that?
I mean, 1.7 is not gonna put our debt service to 10 percent.
With the whole project.
I think, I think the bigger picture, if I may, but when I think of a construction budget on the private side, you've got, you're laying costs, that's not a discussion here because it's a public, it's a public asset. You've got hard costs, soft costs, and financing costs, right? So as part of this budget, we have interest expense that we're gonna have to pay on our entire bonded amount, whatever that is.
That's not a question from the architect to answer.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, is...
Sean, if you could just please let him...
My question, but...
Hold on, guys, hold on.
Can we have one person speak at the time?
It's not true, you, so.
Just, let's just, hold on, please, everybody, let's just not get upset.
Yeah, Derek, it's so great to hear.
I understand what you're telling me, yes. I'm getting my question, I'm kind of...
I didn't want to say anything, so keep somebody's...
Yeah, I'd like to hear both.
Derek, what was your point?
I interrupted, Sean, I concede, so, I apologize.
My point was, is we're looking at the scope of the project tonight, and then, as the three boards, our budgetary process, we need to take our decision into account.
Right.
Recognizing that, yes, there's an isolated financing cost to all projects that haven't yet gone up to bid, right? Or opt to bond, right? And there's debt service that was approved last year that hasn't yet been bonded, correct? So that's gotta be taken into account. So we need to remodel our, our ten-year debt, no matter what, right? And that certainly needs to be taken into account. But for tonight, the board of ed needs to decide what they need, they need to then recommend to our board, what do they need, and we're supposed to recommend to you how it should be paid for, right? And we need to take that into account. We then need to hold each other accountable during the budgetary process. We're not just gonna throw three million on top of everything else we all want. We know that that three million potentially has to come from zeroing out of the projects, pushing things off, making changes, right? So Lisa, your point and your question is fair, but for tonight, it's for the board of ed to figure out what do they want to recommend to us from the projects, folks, anyway.
Can I?
Yeah.
Can I?
Yes.
Do I still have the...
Please, yes.
My question is only related, so there's increased costs to build what you want, but there's also increased costs that you didn't list for borrow, to fund it. So for us, we look at total cost, because if you increase your costs in one area, in our capital plan, if you, one project goes over, costs more to borrow than you thought, costs more to build the same thing, and it costs more to borrow, that means down the line, some other projects are gonna have less, yes.
Sure.
So my question was, the plan is, and this may be more appropriate for Tuesday, but Amy, have you done the bonding cost with our bond advisor? Is it going up for the debt service or no?
It's about eighty thousand, it's nothing significant.
Eighty thousand a year?
No, eighty thousand for the bonding cost. The interest costs would be going up from about, we did a three percent estimate, and it'd be going up to four, four and a half percent.
What's that in dollars?
Amy, when we budgeted for this, it was 2.8 percent?
We did it at three percent and three and a half percent for the second charge, because it was in the out years. So the variance is an additional about 2.6 million in interest costs.
Over the whole project?
No, no, over the whole project.
Over the project.
And how, and it, over the twenty-year span of the project?
The 2.6 is over the twenty years, that's the total.
So it's a little over, how, what would that be per year?
But that goes from three to three and a half, and you said it's likely going from three to four and a half?
Right. That's what Barry gave me.
If it goes from three to four and a half, that's a 50 percent increase, right?
Not a whole...
No.
Well, just...
No, it would have to go to like...
Over twenty years, it's about a hundred and thirty thousand a year.
That's a hundred percent.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. This is why I don't do math in my head at this hour of the night, two days after an election.
So one of the questions I'd ask Amy to prepare for us on Tuesday is to look at the new debt service graph for the whole project, because if this is going up, presumably all our borrowing costs are going up.
Sure.
And one of the things that, I think I can speak for our board, is very important is that we keep debt service in general below the eight percent. So we just want to make sure, we're considering this one off, very important project, we have plans to pay for it that don't involve more borrowing, I believe.
Okay.
And so that, but we, but there is gonna be a borrowing cost increase that we just haven't seen, and ask Amy to incorporate that, so as we do the finances.
All right.
I think our plan is to fund it with not borrowing, so that we don't incur that cost. But on the other stuff we're already planning to borrow, there will be an increased cost, and we just need to make sure that that's with the CIP, and we'll look at that on Tuesday.
Right. But, so just to that point, because I think I just want to clarify for anybody who might be listening, if anybody actually tunes in, pardon me. The thirty-six million has been approved, that's going forward no matter what, that's not coming off the table, because we already have a plan for that. So, and if we can fund the differential without borrowing more, then we're really just talking about what's going into the project.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. I didn't mean to say...
And at the end of the day, one step down the road even more, if we couldn't do that, you would come back to us, have us look at that six-year capital, and move things to fit within the eight percent.
Correct. So it's basically a preview that that's probably coming.
Which is the budget process.
Right. Which is our regular budget process.
So then in terms of the linoleum, could you just talk us about why we would pick linoleum over rubber or alternates, and what's the opinion there?
Let me go to that slide. So, the difference between the two is really just the actual material, the, the maintenance, the longevity, the durability are all, are both similar. There's other, obviously, there's other flooring materials that we, we also looked at during the design process, but from a life cycle cost perspective, the linoleum, we've been using it quite a bit because of its, because of its life cycle costing. So we've used both of these. It really, I guess, it depends on our clients and our clients' preference as far as the cleaning system.
So the question I would ask, and I know Jason's ready for it, because I've asked him a hundred times, the total cost analysis, so he has to cost a little more upfront, but are we gonna have some savings in the operating budget by going with linoleum, and what is that?
Linoleum's cheaper than the rubber.
Oh, the other way, the rubber.
The maintenance costs on the life, the lifecycle cost between linoleum and rubber is not that significant. The lifecycle cost between a linoleum and a, like a VCT is.
So what's the advantage of the rubber floor, then?
Again, it, what, what we do as a standard practice, and for this particular example, we, we select alternative from the finishes so that the owner can see the difference in the value and make a choice decision. In some instances, it's, there's a preference, and some, there's not, so.
So it's got more colors.
Pretty.
Which hard cost contingencies are usually held...
Yeah, it's...
Why is this outside? Typically, like an owner's contingency is like picking between...
Yeah, yeah, they would...
It's the known unknown, so I'm just, this is outside the budget.
Yeah.
We've blown through our owner's contingency.
Yeah, on a, no, we preserve the numbers, the original numbers, the number summary that I showed for budget and the 1.7 add, maintain the owner's contingency, the CMR contingency, they do not draw those down to zero. So those, the, the original soft cost structure for the project remains proportionally the same.
So I look at this as, do we want the builder's grade, or do we want the fancy floor?
So, and then just in terms of the rubber, it says doesn't include any moisture mitigation, so if they're really, if the same remaining useful life, we do have additional costs with moisture mitigation, how often do you have to apply that?
Well, the moisture mitigation potentially is when you do the relative humidity test on the existing slabs or new slabs, and it's a, it's a topical treatment to prevent moisture from coming through and affecting it. So there could be, with a rubber, because it doesn't breathe like a linoleum, could be additional potential costs of an install, depending on that testing, so.
I just wanted to follow up, so I'm a little confused. So there's no difference in longevity, no difference in maintenance, one's a little more expensive, twice as expensive as the other, and we're including it as an alternate. I'm not understanding why you didn't just go with the linoleum, I'm missing something.
It's, it's a great question, and I'll tell you the reason why. Because over the last year and a half, two years, we've seen things that we think we can get all the time, like roof insulation, would be, we know that cost like that, not a problem. For about five or six months, that number went up probably fourfold. When, when you have the ability to provide options with cost options because of product sourcing availability, we do that. So I will tell you on other projects, and I think Justin can back me up, on a project that we did a year and a half, two years ago, those numbers were probably closer together. So there's, there's extreme volatility and various different pockets of, of bidding, and part of our job is to, to identify those, put those in a package, and somewhat protect the owner so that they can see those costs. Is that, so, and that happens across all different systems, not just finishes, it's, it's things like we did a ductal iron pipe, because that is the latest and greatest issue in construction. So, so that's the answer. It may not make, you know, sense from a, from a product selection standpoint, but from a product availability standpoint, certainly in these times, it does make sense.
One more question about the linoleum, are you talking about sheet linoleum or tiles? Because one concern to me with the rubber is I'm assuming it is a sheet, not in tiles.
Actually, both products come in both types.
Okay, because tiles, at least, if you have damage in one place, you can easily...
Exactly.
And not have to...
So there's, so there's areas in the building that have sheet and some areas that have tile, for that very reason, yeah. tile, for that very reason, yeah.
Go ahead, Sean.
So I guess it would help me, I mean, we could spend a lot of time looking at all these, but what is the Board of Ed considering recommending to the Board of Selectmen?
So that's a, so this is a perfect segue for me, because what we want to do is hear from Mike about what his priorities are, because it will be his building, and what is, he thinks is the most important inclusion.
Can I, can I interrupt before you do that? I think to say from the main slide, is that, that you're what you're going to say. As a, as a product in that building, that's a good or bad thing for people to stand. Exactly. So, I think about where we are, I'm trying to think, for me, this is a difficult decision, because you're asking a person who has zero knowledge about educating children to weigh in on a conversation about educating children. And that's, I'm thinking for anybody else in this room who's not in education, so I don't feel super comfortable about taking a position other than supporting the decision that's already been moved forward by the experts in this room and by the townspeople in our town, right? Because what we've said is, we've, we have a need, and, and we believe we need to improve on the basis of education in that building. And the townspeople said, yes, they agreed to that, and they supported, and they paid for it two years ago. Now, the cost increase is 4.8%. I'm a little lame in math, this guy. So to me, it's really, we, we, that's the first cutoff point, which is, the price went up by 4.8%, but the belief of the building needed to be improved to deliver higher level of education is what's already been defined and agreed to by the townspeople. So the 4.8% to me is, it means that we need to support that. That's what we should do. We should put that back forward, it should be automatically supported. We, in this town, we have a history of not finishing projects to, to get a no to maybe a yes. So the bright farms, or the Oracle Farms project in, what, 1971, for the price string, that's complete debacle. Okay, but that was, but it was, it was moved to a yes. The, the performing arts, the metal, which has been hands down one of the most incredible assets this town has ever thought about before. It had the vision to put that up, but it's not complete, and it never was complete, it never even was possibly near being completion, just so we can get it done. But what are we looking at now? Millions of dollars invested, which are probably well deserved, okay? This building, whoever designed that little pigtail that didn't connect, I mean. Prove that. I hope it's not this room, because that makes no sense to me, why we did something like that. So just kind of like, so what I just come back to is, I shouldn't be making decisions necessarily about what this building should be for or not. Townspeople already said that, at least by the 4%. So what I ask is, when we think about the ads, and Mike, this is why I'm segueing, do you think about the question set up about what do you need? I, I cannot sit here and make a decision whether 1 through 8 are the right things to invest in as it relates to delivering a higher level of education. Is it improving and impacting the level of education? And, because I don't want, I don't want these to be takeaways just so you guys can get a yes, like three other failed projects in this town that happen to be made, we know, network fail, but the lack of force that didn't get the yes. Thank you very much.
We just see if anybody has any other questions before we get the recommendations.
Well, because we want to just hear what Mike is thinking as his priorities.
Just as part of the conversation.
Just because he's as much a part of this conversation as all of us. So I just thought it might be helpful in framing any additional questions if you hear where Mike's thinking is, okay?
Thank you, Susan. From a.
Hold on, can you share a microphone with Mike, just so?
Of course, everyone at home, guess what I'm saying? So from a programmatic impact, 3 and 5 are the two that if I, if you were to say, you got $200,000 of things that you can put back into it, obviously, I, I would happily sit and defend every single thing on this list because we felt they were worthy inclusions from the start. I don't need the rubber flooring, though. You know, 3 and 5 directly impact the use of those spaces. They change the function of the spaces, not to be super dramatic about it, but it does change the intent of the use of the space, where we can have families gather for presentations, where we can have kids present their reading and their writing, and their musical performances to their, to their peers and their classmates. It changes the function of it. I think, you know, alternate number two, the, the site work, the, the seat walls, again, directly impacts the use and the function. You know, through the whole COVID period, we learned about having our kids outside.
Did you say 3 and 5 or 2 and 5?
He said 3 and 5.
Sorry. 3 and 5 as like the, the first two, 2 being sort of that next one up. So 3 and 5 impact directly the, the courtyards. They impact, they pull out that crushed gravel, and it gives us flat, level surfaces that we can have kids. You know, one of the pieces that we, again, not to be super dramatic, one of the pieces we addressed in this building is the fact that it's inaccessible in a wheelchair to the upper level. I'm now going to fill the entire courtyard that you used to get from the art room to the cafeteria with crushed stone, which again, now I've got to take a loop around the building. It limits the accessibility, it limits the, the intent and the scope that I think that we originally put into it. We've worked really hard, and Tecton has worked, done outstanding job looking at how many, you know, outs, outside learning spaces can, can we create for our kids? How many outside celebration spaces can we create? And 2, 3, and 5 again are the ones that really impact that the most. Again, if I had to, if I had to keep it super, super, super small, 3 and 5, I think, are hugely impactful. I think 2 is, you know, sort of, like, that would be that next, it's maybe a smidgen less impactful. But I mean, when, when the space was designed and it, and it was voted on and the, and the need was seen, those were the pieces I think that, that would be, that would be the most important. And I think, you know, I think that would be echoed by the team that's, that's been meeting consistently with Neil and Jason and myself and Matt, that those are the pieces, although they're all worthy inclusions, those are the pieces that there was a lot of intent and purpose behind why we picked those.
I'll just add, during design development.
Yeah. Oh, here. Sorry.
And Mike stated it, but during design development, you, this was right in the middle of the COVID impact on education, and the stress on outdoor space and making functional, effective outdoor space for kids was part of the design. And that was why this site work was put in in the first place. We asked, we asked for that as an emphasis in the, in the design process. Tecton responded, you know, listened to what we were asking for and incorporated it. And then, when we had to do some value management, that was one of the things that we said, it's, it's sort of an easier thing to put outside as opposed to taking a stage out of the school, or it was more of an easy thing to separate as an alternate. But it's, I, I, Jason, Mike and I have been the three staff members most closely associated with the working meetings with the professionals, and I think we stand unified on those being the priorities.
Sorry, question?
Yes, ma'am.
So when we think about the buckets, we are fortunate to be in this, we do have cash to pay for some of this, and certainly do that if you get the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen. Question I have is you, in two years, you have about $9 million in asks for capital. And is, are these your priorities compared to what else is on, coming down?
Our priority is definitely going to be a lot and really at this point in time, because we want to see this project finished, to Chris Peterson's point, in a useful, effective way for the school for the long term.
And it's already started, right.
I just want to clarify with that, too. The one challenge to that, too, if you go and look at our capital plan right now, all you have on there basically outside of the last out year where there's some stuff for the fields, it seems very high school in athletics, are roofs, boilers, and electrical. So there, there are not nice-to-haves on that list under 8% at all. So there are things we could shift that make, that make a move with the debt service, right? We've had a conversation, Jason and I, kind of, and Amy walking through if and when we need to go through this exercise, that current year is a pretty large roof project, we can definitely get another year of life out of that, out of that roof and start to think about what that does to the curve. But it's, I completely respect your question, but when you get down to what we're looking at on that capital plan, with all the work we've done with Tecton over the last couple of years, this conversation doesn't get any easier. You know, it does not get any easier.
So one of the things I think are everybody's challenges is to consider this project in a vacuum without looking at the whole thing, but just keeping in mind that there are some huge capital needs coming down the line, and if we allocate dollars towards this, they won't be available towards other capital projects that are coming. So that's why, that's why, as long as your board is in consensus that this is your top priority, it enables us to consider this first, in terms of that. But it also goes to the Board of Selectmen as well, in terms of whether, what their priorities are in that. And then, I'll see you.
I just wanted to bring this home, and top priority is one thing, but suppose it's a less priority, we don't have a boiler for the school, maybe less important, but the school doesn't operate if you don't have that boiler. So I'm not, it's not clear to me, I follow the question, but I don't get the answer. You can have things of lesser priority that are going to be absolutely essential to put in the budget that we're going to have to deal with. And I guess, to me, that's what I would want to crank in, is what are we absolutely going to have to spend in order to keep the schools operational in that capital?
And I guess I would need that from your board, right, in specifics and what you're willing to look at in these other buckets, and we, we could have that conversation if we have to go back and look at the capital plan. I mean, my understanding or hope would be what are the other ways we can get at some of these things within reason without doing that?
Yeah, and I thought the question was what's coming down the road.
Yeah, kind of a master plan.
So, which we've done, right? We have all that.
I guess that's a different structured conversation. I just don't have all that information in front of me tonight.
Right. Derek, sorry, I'll, I'll come around, I promise.
A couple of questions on the, on the state funding. So as the budget fluctuates, do, if the budget goes up, do the state funds potentially increase?
Great question. We had a meeting with them yesterday, in fact, and I asked that question, and the answer was, we'll consider it. So the path is, the answer to your question, the path is, you file 049R, once you have all of this information on the budget, you file it. I will tell you that you're not the only community that's in this position, and you're in a community that is in a better position than some others that are going back to ask for more dollars. So they are considering it this year, and they want that information as soon as possible so that they understand.
Thank you. And then, as part of the budget, the state has to approve, I call them guaranteed cost or approved cost, right, that you have to check the box in order to get that funding based on your budget, right? So have, has the state gone through the budget such that it has approved the budget such that we would get the full funding?
So they've been intimately involved, and we've had a series of gateway meetings, the last one being the PCR meeting, which is planned conformance. So the answer is that we're tracking everything from all the eligible costs and eligible costs, and they're, and it's fully transparent with the state. That's what Jack from Arcadis, the OPM, is, is doing on a monthly basis as, as we move into construction. So the answer is, yes, they're tracking it, yes, we're having communication with them, and they're fully aware of what's eligible and not eligible, so.
And then just one last point on the financing, and then I'll, I'll stop about it. What we're talking about here are, are, are choices, things that we can control. What we can't control is our borrowing cost. Now, for argument's sake, we could have been in the ground this fall, that was the original intention, our bonding would have been earlier this year, and our borrowing costs would have been lower. Just in an abundance of transparency, I think it's important, while we're acknowledging what these hard cost increases are in front of us and that we're reported to, or in a letter to staff and parents, I, I think while this project is baked in terms of it was approved at 36 million, and we'll borrow at what we need to borrow, people also need to understand that we're also going to the public for an additional $2.5 million in interest expense, which may influence their decision on whether they decide to, you know, you know, vote for an additional $1.7 million for this project. That, that would be my only point.
So that's something you want to do at your public hearing, is what I would guess. You'd want to make that statement at your public hearing.
I'm making that statement now in public so that everybody who's watching, everybody knows that we're asking them for additional dollars other than what's shown on this page. To the tune of today, and interest rates are likely to go up before we bond at $2.5 million, so.
So do we do that with all our projects, include our interest rates when we discuss it?
It goes into our debt service projections when we do the graph.
Right.
So, yes.
Interest rates have been falling in love for the past 40 years. This is the first time sharing a time period in 40 years, so, like, yes, it's very important right now, and while it may not have been as important, the magnitude may not have been as important then, it certainly is today.
I'm going to do Wendy, and then I'll get to you, Sean. Okay, so I want to thank Mike for being very honest and not asking for the whole sheet of paper here, geothermal. And so I just want to also confirm, like, what's on the capital plan, what's on the CNR right now for Board of Ed items is pretty much what you foresee the asks being of us coming up in the budget cycle, just so we can know financially what, you know, if we have to look at places to cut or whatever. So is that true?
I mean, that's how it stands now, we're just starting that budget process, but, I mean, I would expect if you want us to go back, or we need to adjust the debt service, that we would adjust our projects, we wouldn't ask the Board of Selectmen to adjust their project.
Right.
Okay, I'm just just making sure, like, this is the full boat of asks.
We have no large new project we're coming to the table this year asking for.
Right.
Okay, so that, that's kind of what I would.
We might move things in and out, re-prioritize things, but we'll have that entire collaborative debt service conversation during the budget.
And then I was just going to kind of tie back a little to the financial thing. So we agree tonight, you know, we like Mike, what Mike said, right, and you guys agree to that. So we, we're meeting Monday, right? We're going to have to make decisions on this on Monday. And so from my perspective, you know, we, we pay for the Board of Ed, we pay for Public Works, we pay for Parks and Rec, I kind of have to look at the, kind of in comparison to everything else that we have on the project list, or what I may or may not have to, you know, we're saying we have all the money for this, right? So if we do have all the money for this, and if we continue to do everything on our capital plan, is the cost going to go up to the taxpayer? If not, then we can kind of afford this. But if we say we want to up this by $2.2 million, and we don't cut something else, it's going to cost the taxpayers more. You know, those are the kind of things, so it does have a financial impact to our decision making on Monday, how we look at all these items, because we may have to look and not do something else later, right?
But a little bit to your point, which, this is why we have that, we have to schedule a referendum, because that gives the taxpayers the ability to say, we'll accept this or we won't. And if they say no, then we redress it then as well.
Yeah.
In a bit of an order of operations exercise, too, right? We need to provide to you the concrete dollars so you can have the conversation about, do you feel comfortable with that or not, and what are potential funding sources which goes to them? And then if it wheels back to us and we say, hey, Matt, you, you have to get with your board, and you may have to move something up or down. You know, it's kind of a, we want all the answers at once, but it's kind of intimately linked to us saying, hey, we want to put forward this number, you guys wrestle with it, it comes here, and then we have to.
Lots of levels to go.
Yeah, but I think we need to be accessible to each other at these meetings so that we can provide an ease to those. That question means a lot more when you have ideas about how you want to fund it, right?
Yeah. Well, that's right, yeah.
Sean, you had something?
No, Wendy raised a fair point, and Derek as well, right? The additional financing cost is certainly a challenge for us on what we're going to do over the next 20 years, right, can impact us, but, you know, some of that is technically sunk, because you can still do the building at, at probably some smaller scope, so while it is, it's a real number, that's, quote, my loss, that ship has sailed. From Wendy's standpoint, though, this is a, this is going to be a seven-month conversation, right? In that you, your board's going to make a decision tonight on what you recommend as Board of Selectmen. We have to think about everything that Wendy is saying and hold it in our memory bank for when we talk with you guys again in March, right? It's, it's the reality of it, and it's, it's not a threat. a threat, it's right, it's the reality, it's a long, long process, right? And then, we have to recommend to these guys, what do we want to change? Because we can't just keep going down with, we just want what we want, we want, right? They made very clear that we need to advertise. So, my rambling point is, I'm sure the Board of Ed members are considering future impacts, right, to your debt, to your debt needs, right, to your debt plan, when you're considering what you're going to add back or not, from our recommendation standpoint. I think the consensus is what everybody's trying to say right now.
Right.
Yeah, thanks, Sean.
Sorry, one more question. What stage of construction does that have to take place? It might take some pressure off boards if we know that if it needs to be put in day one to help, you know, build the project, that's different than being able to bring it in at a later point in time, and we could say, okay, this is an easy add versus, this needs to go in first. I don't know if we have enough time to make a decision to say that this should go, that this goes in first.
Yeah, Brian will be able to answer that.
Thanks, Brian. Sure.
Yeah, so, for the most part, we'd want to do that install at the beginning, and it's more just to acquire the equipment, right, because we're going to have some equipment changes if we do go that geothermal route. So, basically, we have an air-cooled chiller, if we went geothermal, we'd have to now change that out and get kind of a heater-chiller module, so it would, it may affect lead times and when we'd actually be able to, you know, acquire the equipment.
What's the value of that boiler we put in?
Two, six, $700,000?
Okay, does, we, I know, just Kelly mentioned that we have to have a backup. Do you actually, all right, come on. Do we, do we, so would we need a backup with geothermal?
So, so, we would recommend, so, the quick answer is no, but if you keep the boilers there, it's going to significantly reduce the size of your generator, right? Because now we're actually just backing up the gas system, so we would actually recommend just keeping your boiler system in place and just using it for backup heat.
Okay, so you know where we're going with this, so there's not a value pulling that thing out, putting it someplace else, setting a $600,000 at some other project in this town?
It's, and I would say, I mean, once you install equipment like that, to move it, and it's, it's a finicky process with contractors.
I know, Roy wants to, you know. Trying to get creative, so what we got there.
All right, so, I just, I have a question for Amy, because we're talking a lot about the high rate of borrowing right now. If you bond and the interest rate is high, and in five years, we go back to a 2% or a 3%, can we refinance the debt?
We can do a refunding, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, that while we're, I understand to the point that we are where we are, but we also know that inflation isn't forever, and it's going to be cyclical, and things will change at some point. So, I would just throw that out there. With that, I haven't heard from my own board, so if, I'm sorry, Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, there's so much to ask, too. A couple of comments and questions. I think it would be really helpful for all of us to, for each one of these things to get a better sense of what are the ongoing operating costs, and what are the build-it-now versus build-it-later differential costs, to Amber's point earlier. You know, if it's going to cost a whole lot more later to do it, maybe you want to do it now. If it's not going to cost more later, obviously, it's a different thing. But there are also, I think, some differences in ongoing operating costs on a few of these, like, I would imagine the stamped concrete is easier maintenance-wise than gravel, which you have to replace and rake and clean up and things like that. But the flip side is the courtyard, I don't know, maybe gravel in a courtyard is easier to take care of than trying to get a lawnmower inside a courtyard. But, that's not for me to wonder about, but I think everybody would benefit from having a better understanding of what's the impact on your operating budget.
Right.
Because maybe if there's operating savings to offset some of the costs on the capital side, then it's worth doing. So, that was one comment. Geothermal, just a comment, you know, Westminster, I'm not arguing on behalf or against, Westminster did do geothermal in the most recent building that they built, and I just wondered, you know, given Mark Scully's point about, you know, 300-year payback period, I can guarantee you a private school would not have done it if it was a 300-year payback period. So, I think getting some better information and maybe even talking to them, what was their analysis if you, you know, if you wanted to talk to them, and they were very proud of it, they gave tours and everything, so I'm sure they'd be happy to talk to you. And I also wondered about communications, because some of the points made earlier, you know, how are we going to communicate about the financial costs of borrowing, et cetera? I, I'm very, I mean, it's one thing to say it here or even in a public audience, we know that there's about, you know, I don't know, 12 people here if we're lucky, it'd be about the same in our public audience. That does not tell the public what they need to know. And sending a letter to the parents of the schools doesn't tell the public what they need to know. We need a communication plan that goes out to everybody.
So, we've talked about partnering with the town and their listserv and being able to communicate that way, we've already worked a sort of a sketch plan.
Communicator document as well, we're going to pull up that timeline that gets mailed to every household.
Every household.
Facebook from both town and, I mean, I think we have a lot of ways that we'll make sure.
Right, so we're not, we're not looking to hide this in any way.
We have a lot of, right, website, we can put the link, we can put the link on the town and then.
Right, so we need the town and the board website to have all that information.
That's terrific, because I think having a good public.
And I think that plan, once we know.
Once we have dates, we can push all that out.
I can provide what that plan would look like to all the boards. Yeah, very important.
Just two, these are kind of plebeian things, but storage shed, it strikes me, either you have to have it or you don't. I mean, I'm serious, that either if you, if it's not there, you're going to sacrifice classroom building or something else, or, I would think that, that and also some sort of a barrier gate. Could you tell me, it strikes me that either you got to have those things, or you don't.
I think the conversation for us is, you know, storage shed, putting it back in at $160,000, or do we make a trip up to Coiter Farms?
Yeah.
So, wait, so, right.
Sixteen by thirty, you might be working there right now.
Right, and we've, we've had that conversation, so like, so those things not being in this discussion as a priority, we feel like there are ways we can address that at a lesser cost, in a, in a different way.
We've all seen outbuildings that look like crap because they don't fit aesthetically, that's called whatever, so, it's funny those are not the stuff, I'm just cautious.
Coiter Farms is going to get a big bang from their budget.
Maybe they'll get a, maybe they'll stop.
Maybe they'll pay us for advertising.
Outbuildings that don't look right.
Little Red Schoolhouse.
Sean's warming up the car.
Thirty-four mine.
There you go.
Hi, and this is, thank you for your presentation, that was actually very helpful, and Mike, for your priorities, that was very helpful as well. One question I had is in the state reimbursement, we budgeted actually about a million less than we're anticipating getting, I presume that's because you don't always get the full reimbursement? So, what, if we do get that full reimbursement, we might have an extra $1 million, how do you anticipate you to adjust that, or is that just, you never see that?
Well, there's, that's a great question. So, in the original budgeting that we had shown those charts, we carried a line item always called ineligible costs, and that kind of reduced your reimbursement rate. So, and those, those happen on every project. We have a current list running, that list changes because of the current state process, they put things like contingencies in there, but as you use them or don't use them or don't spend it, all those go away. So, that, if that ineligible cost changes and you get it back, it's not a free, you know, free money to go spend, it doesn't happen, it happens more at the audit phase than anything to make sure that the ineligible costs align up with, with the project finances and information. So, so that's, I think, the short answer to it. Just to be clear, on, on the project budget, still has an owner contingency and a GMP contingency in there, and it still has the budgets allocated for furniture and technology and those things. So, the reason why I say that is because there's, there's protections in there if things happen on a project unforeseen, things like that. We don't have to rely on that, you know, the ineligible cost piece.
Yeah, but my question is more optimistic, suppose we get.
So, if we come in, if we come in under budget, like with anything, that would end up going back to the town, right? So, if we get reimbursed at a rate that, where it frees up money somewhere else, we would be turning money back to the town.
And would that, Amy, because it's, could we then apply that to debt service, to Derek's point, so we can apply it to other approved bonded projects?
Right.
Including debt service for this project? Right, theoretically, okay.
That's quite the process down the road of.
Right, but that's always, I mean, when do we close out projects?
Two years after.
Two years after people are in store.
I don't want to get into that.
I'll be gone. Hey, Sean, you have one more?
So, the whole debt service conversation, I know it's not exactly what we're here for, but Amy, if there's an additional $2.6 million, plus let's say we put a couple, couple million in for the bond tonight, we're talking about $200,000 a year in increased cost over the next 20 years, give or take, from what it costs in the annual budget, right?
Right.
Give or take. Now, that assumes, the only way there's an increase to the taxpayer assumes if we do everything else, we'd already planned to do. If we cut things back and save the 8%, or bring ourselves back to 7%, technically, there's no increase to the taxpayer.
Correct.
So, this project doesn't, the increase here doesn't necessarily, well, the increase that we're talking about tonight will directly hit back the taxpayer now, but if we could mitigate or eliminate that in the future, and the increase could be zero depending on our decisions in the spring and future boards.
Right, depends on what you do during the budget process.
That's precise.
So, I agree with Derek's point that there is a potential $2.6 million increase cost, but 18 of us can mitigate or eliminate that in April and in future years, right?
By making somebody else really unhappy.
Yeah.
That's the juggling.
But that ship sailed when we decided to spend 36 million, we knew that was going to put pressure on future budgets, so we're talking about eliminating an additional $200,000 in debt service for the next 20 years, which is a big thing, but part of that is happening through the project anyway. So, I agree with Eric, we need to be transparent about it, but also telling the taxpayers that there is an additional $2.6 million cost isn't exactly the story either, right? Because it matters what future boards decide.
Well, it is an increased cost for this project, so if you're thinking about it project by project, yes.
Correct, from the project's point, yes, but as far as what they pay every year in taxes, it may, it may not, it depends on what future boards decide.
Precisely, but I think, and I speak just for me, but I hope I'm in concurrence with Eric, individuals vote on individual projects, so it's just an increased cost, and I think our only point is goes to the communication, how we communicate.
No, I don't need to communicate, it's just, again, but putting on a page, hey, you're going to pay $2.6 million over the next 20 years in taxes, isn't necessarily true.
I agree with you, right, I hope that, I, I hope to have the faith that you do that we.
Make other things.
I hope we do, right, I mean, we got to hold ourselves, we got some tough decisions to, it's really a good question of, if we have a boiler go, well, then we're going to have a hard time going 8%, staying 8%, right? And if it goes, you know, those are, that's a lot of real pressure we're all facing.
Yeah, and what, to your point, Sean, when that happens, if you go above 8%, people think, oh, it's just an 8%, it's a number, well, that translates into your operating budget. We're going to see our debt service costs $1.7 million next year to pay for, so that's a big jump, that's more than the increase, that's almost another Board of Ed thing, so we plan for that, but, so it does have an operating impact.
The one and only increase on overall budget.
All right.
This is just on, this is on an item that I need to clarify.
Yep.
The poured-in-play surface.
Yes.
What's there if that's not there?
Wood chips.
Wood chips.
Like every other playground in Tech Town. Wood chips.
Okay, when people, when the people voted on this, the parents in the town voted on it, did they think it was going to be wood chips, or they thought it was going to be their played-in surface, right?
We didn't have that level.
I don't think we had that kind of detail.
No one's going to say they're not getting what they paid for, is really what I'm asking.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's really expensive.
Is solar involved in this?
No, we're not, I believe we have the infrastructure to allow it, because of power purchase agreements, I believe.
All right, so with that, I think I'm going to move it to my board so that we can have our conversation.
You're welcome to stay.
You're more than welcome to stay while we figure out what we're going to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, but that's sort of where we're going, that's what we're going to move into now, okay? All right, so with that, to my board, you've all heard everything, Jeff, if you can just stay there, so they have questions for you, I want to make sure we go around and hit everybody here. So, Mr. Ma, however we want to do it.
So, you know, I've sat here and I've listened to everything and.
Hang on one second, just so we don't have like the cross-talk, can you guys make sure your microphones are off? Thank you.
My thoughts right now are to trust the process, trust the experts, trust Mike, that's kind of where I'm leaning towards this at the moment.
Yep, I appreciate that.
So.
Do you have any questions on any of it?
No, you know, I had a few questions about like linoleum versus rubber, but, I mean, I leave that to the experts, I think, you know, if, if Mike and Jeff and everyone else are comfortable with linoleum, then absolutely, I think it's aesthetics, right?
Right.
So, I'm good with that.
Okay. Lynn?
So, I think I'm going to agree with Eric over there at the end of the table, you know, at times.
Eric.
Chris.
Derek.
Derek or Chris?
Derek or Chris?
Who are we talking about?
I agree with. Let's see what she's saying next.
You look, oh, it's a long day.
It's a long week.
Long week, long day, but I'm going to agree with you, I think at times, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, we can't be shortsighted on projects, and, and as you eloquently stated about the projects over the years and years and years that we've done, and never really, you know, completed them, fulfilled them to where they probably should be, I'm concerned about this. And, and looking at this whole list here, I mean, for me, I am concerned about the geothermal, I know it's the biggest ticket item, but I hope we're not shortsighted in this, it is an expensive, big-ticket item, but I think down the road, you know, if it's something that is going to save us costs down the road, why would we not consider at this point? Because any of these alternates that we do not put in, I'm just concerned we may not be getting them back at any, at any point down the road in time.
So, that kind of goes to my question, the break-even on the geothermal, what did we learn about that?
What we learned was the building itself, and Jeff can speak to this probably better than I can, and certainly, yes, but it's a very efficient building, and the boilers are new, and the reason that the difference in how long it takes to get that return back is because we're basing it on new natural gas boilers in a building that's, what they've designed, very insulated, all the materials are coming from a place that you're already starting at, a very energy-efficient place. So, when you're trying to add in geol, on top of that, to gain efficiencies, it's going to take an awful lot to gain something starting at that starting point.
Yeah, and just add to that too, right, it's also a hybrid geosystem, so we're not offsetting a huge amount of the building load, which is also why it's not paying back as, you know, as much as we really would like it to. But I think the thing to remember too is that, you know, technology's ever, you know, it's ever expanding, it's growing, that all the heat pump technology's getting a lot better, so if we don't put in geothermal now, you know, in that, in that water, the heat pump boiler technology, heating hot water gets better down the road, in five to 10 years, you know, those boilers could be swapped out and just do air-source heat pump, you know, hot water makers, and now you guys are, you know, carbon-free, and you could be net-zero with solar. So, just not having the geothermal doesn't mean that you can't be, you know, decarbonization in the future.
Jen?
I, I had the same question with the geothermal, and then I had a question, I picture it as answered, but that number eight, which sounds like, like the, you know, shed we can buy, we can do cheaper, because I would imagine number eight, while it doesn't affect our education, still, I wouldn't want my child out there if there was a safety concern, and so, just having the number eight in there.
But can we talk about where number eight is located?
Number eight is in front of the custodial area where the dumpsters are located, there's not hardly a gate there now as the building.
And no student would be there, right? So, so.
So there is a gate at the driveway in our plans. Like the other schools? Do we have any barrier gates anywhere?
There's gates on to the, there's, there's protection between the fields and the driveways. There's not, are you thinking like along with like what Squadron has?
Yes.
Okay, so there isn't, but that's because we have a full gate, a full fence that wraps around the, the playground areas and the outdoor areas.
So nobody's driving, like, like our bus, the bus lane at Squadron runs between the playgrounds.
Yeah, that's, that wouldn't be the case here. There's no, there's no student areas outside of that main body.
Gotcha.
So similar, there would be a similar, like, similarly to what we have now on the basketball courts, there's just a regular swing gate that locks that we open in the winter to plow. That would be there, but there's, there's nothing formal like you, like what you see at Squadron or Central where cars travel sort of through that playground area.
Gotcha.
What is the benefit of it?
The barrier gate?
The barrier gate at the custodial.
It's, it's, it's just, it's a deterrent from people going into, into that particular area.
So it's, it's more, it's like a driveway, it's wide enough to be a driveway to accommodate vehicles and we want to make sure vehicles don't use it.
Yeah, essentially.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you're familiar with the existing loading area, it's somewhat similar to that pulled, pulled to the right on your plan here. So we just wanted to have a vehicle barrier gate to kind of prevent and deter people.
So it's not, it's not a safety hazard to not have it, I guess, is the point.
I didn't realize that there.
No.
Okay, okay.
When did we go to referendum on the 36 whatever million? Was that two years ago?
That was May of 2021.
So a year and a half ago?
Yes.
And like Chris said, we're looking at 4.8% increase plus whatever potential add-ons we throw in?
Yep.
And inflation numbers came out the other night as 7.7?
Yes.
So that's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's not great, but.
But it could be worse.
Considering where the heck we're at right now.
For context, Jack, what this with Arcadis, in the interim between the referendum estimate and our construction estimate, our construction manager told us that construction industry inflation went up 13 and 3/4%. Not 7 and 3%.
No, I know.
So when you compare, even if you added the alternates in, you would still be much less than the 13 and 3/4%. And some, some escalation was built into the budget, which would have left you with about a 10% gap. And even with all these costs, we're shooting at less than 10%, which says that your design team has provided you a very efficient solution.
Thank you.
And so the other thing I want to say was that as a parent who also has elementary, I don't know how many of us have elementary-age kids, I just wanted to bang home again. That outdoor space is critical and not having kids being kids and throwing stones or picking up stuff and making a mess. I think having that time and it has been great. And even post-COVID, I'm not throwing stones.
In other words, not gravel.
Really important. Really important to finish that space if we can finish it.
Okay. Mr. Tindall?
All of a sudden I'm nervous about sitting next to Jen. I, I struggle with this. I got to be honest with you. Like Chris, I started my illustrious educational career in this building, so that was a joke. Not so illustrious. But I, I, right out of the gate, we're $1.7 million over. That's a big number. The add-ons, I, I have to trust Mike and, and that seems to be a, a good place to land. That seems fiscally responsible as well as getting to Shaun's question about what is educationally appropriate. With geothermal specifically, listen, as the chair, what, two things bother me, obviously, that one is the price tag. I, I just have a hard time going back to the voters with at that point then 3.3 million plus. But also I have a process concern. That is something that was added to this process after the Board of Ed put our recommendation forward. In other words, this is something that was added to a Board of Ed project without the Board of Ed's support. I, I mean, I think we probably all support it, right? But there's a process issue there. That's a dangerous precedent to set. Whatever the, whatever the project is going forward, that is a very dangerous place I don't want to be. So we have, you know, really don't want to talk about this tonight, but, right? We've talked about a very large master plan where other schools will, will be having the same discussion or maybe our successors will be having this discussion that I think hyb, the geothermal is a very appropriate conversation to have within those conversations. But sitting here tonight, when, just sitting here right at the beginning, it was 1.7 million, I, I just think I have to pass on that one reluctantly.
Okay. Where do you, what do you feel about any of the other pieces of it?
Oh, I, I would follow Mike's lead, you know, with three and five, that's 160. And depend if we have the appetite you put in two, but certainly three and five, again, I, I follow Mike's recommendations on that.
I feel that, I, thank you Detective Ron, because I really do think that you've taken really, you've worked really hard on this and I think that we are in a much better place than we could almost anticipate because of the situation in the supply chains and all of the expenses that have increased. Geothermal, I think, is a great thing and I think all of our town buildings should put that into the conversation at the beginning of any project that happens going forward because it does have to start before you even really start the plan. And I think that it's really the way we should be going and I think it's a responsible way for the townspeople because I do think it pays back. This, it came in too late and we're in such a, I just don't think it works for this project. And I'm, I'm sad to say that and hopefully down the road, maybe the, as technology meets our needs, we can look at it again and potentially do some solar on the way to that point. I follow, I think everyone here has worked really hard on this project and I think the townspeople are expecting it and looking forward to it and I think our students really need it because that building needs a lot of work. And to explain the pigtail, for anyone who heard that comment but doesn't know what it means, it means there was a hallway that you have to walk out of and then go around a couple classrooms and then walk back into the building. And we don't know how that happened and none of us were there at the time.
None of us were there. That was, that was.
That was, I don't know when it happened. We're not talking about it, but we are fixing it. And I do think, I do think, I think we should do two, three and five. And I think they're important. I think those are things that once you have the people on site to bring people back to do something like that, one, won't happen, two, will be very, very difficult. And those courtyards, again, are really important places for our students. And we don't need more pockets of, of gravel in our laundry machines in our houses. So I think that no gravel, I think we should really work on the concrete and that's my opinion. And I like linoleum. We don't need rubber flooring.
We don't need that.
So. So, so thank you, Jeff, for your comments because I came in, I know I was a little late, but I was wondering where number one came in and with the asterisk there, I just couldn't figure out. And so, but I do say thank you to Mike on three and five and I would also add in two. You know, as a resident first and then a Board of Ed member, the additional cost is high. And I, and I, and I appreciate what's been said here about us sharing that and communicating that in ways and means that the community will understand. You know, and you can't over-communicate that. And so my recommendation would be to follow Mike's. And those other items that are six, seven and eight, including number one, you know, I, I think they end up sitting on a list from my vantage point for the future.
Thank you. I think, just to get my two cents in, I very much, I spent a lot of time on facilities enrollment with Tara and Jeff and Jeff and Neil and we all worked on this for a long time. And I agree that we should have had the conversation about net zero and carbon-free much sooner. And we have a master plan out there for other buildings, God knows when they'll come up, but that should certainly be a major consideration going forward. I am optimistic in hearing that there might be ways to convert to solar that could give us that same net zero effect in the not-too-distant future and that we will be set up to accept that there. So I think that's a huge compromise that really makes this a little easier. And I also believe after spending all these years with COVID and having a daughter who is a second grade teacher and understanding the incredible need for outdoor spaces, I, I'm fully in support of Mike's request for, certainly for three and five. And, and two, I would love to see happen because I feel like if we don't put it in now, we're not going to get it. So my feeling is, to the points that were made over and over again, there are certain things that are just going to cost us so much more money to try to come back and do later on. I'm, I am fine going to Coita Farms, I am fine getting a barrier gate down the road and using traffic cones if we need to right now. Finding other ways to make some of those other things happen. So my feeling is also two, three and five and following the leads of our principal in the building and all the hard work that's been done through public building and through our architects and everybody here. And I want to really show a huge, pay a huge thank you to the Facilities Enrollment Task Force because they spent years on this and I don't know that we ever really gave them their due because they really did a lot of legwork on it. So we are greatly appreciative of every member who sat in it. It was a huge group and I think they did a great, they did the heavy lift. So with that said, since Jeff was our chair of facility, is our chair of facilities enrollment, I'm going to ask you if you would maybe make a motion, Chris?
Look, yeah, I would love to. Based on what I'm hearing, I would move that the Board of Education recommends to the Board of Selectmen for additional funding of the Latimer Lane renovation project in the amount of 2.2 million, wait, 2 million, 261,837, bringing the total project to 39,054,243. That, that would be, that's, that's two, three and five.
That's inclusive of two, three and five. Those, that's the dollars for two, three and five. So Jeff made a motion. I need a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously and is now for the consideration of the Board of Selectmen. And with that, I would take a motion for adjournment.
Can I ask a question? Just because we're going to be all considering this.
Sure.
Can you talk a little bit more, because I think you made a compelling case for three and five. I didn't hear a lot about number two and the picture looked like sort of planters that you could sit on.
No, so it's, it's actually all of the outdoor benches and seating options around the entire building. Those to the north, to the south, the seating options.
Yeah, they're in that picture.
So if you look at where two is, Linda, they're going to be in all those places. So it's not just in, so those are walls that people can sit on? So acting like benches?
And barriers and, happily.
So don't get lost in the trees.
That's a precedent image of, it's not a cut sheet of, of the actual furniture. But we'll take it under consideration.
So I think this is, I don't want to, I don't want, I don't want to cut it off, but I think, why don't we, maybe I can talk to Lisa, I can talk to Wendy. What information about these three alternates do you want for your meetings? Rather than we, you know, they've just made a decision, rather than dice that decision up. You know, we have next week to talk about this. Let me know, I can work with Jeff, we can put that information together, question, you know, and whatever you're kind of looking for.
My, my information that I would want is, you know, what are the alternatives to brick walls?
You want to know what?
What's the educational impact?
If we don't do that, what happens?
Yep, okay. So we can get that information to you next week. So I've asked for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all very much. Appreciate everybody's time.